Call to order, a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, April 4th, 2022. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law under the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have no public comment prior to the meeting tonight, but we do have one public commenter at the tail end of the meeting. We move to the omnibus agenda items that will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Move approval. Thank you.
Second.
Items on the omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the public hearing of March 21st, 2022, and approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 21st, 2022, a report to receive and file town of normal expenditures for payment as of March 30th, 2022, a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with McLean County for animal shelter services, and a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with McLean County for animal warden services. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The omnibus is approved. We have no general orders tonight. We have one item of, well, two items of new business. The first is a presentation by McLean County on the Mental Health Action Plan. This is Reese.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kuss and council. I'm going to invite County Administrator Cassie Taylor and County Board Chairman, Mr. McIntyre, to come forward. They're going to spend a little time this evening talking about the Behavioral Health Action Plan, specifically the Behavior, Behavioral Health Coordinating Council and the associated budget, because we have fielded some questions, had some conversations this year about the status of the budget. And Chairman McIntyre and Ms. Taylor are here to provide some information. So, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. I'm John McIntyre, Chairman of McLean County Board. Thank you, Mayor Kuss, and honorable members of Town Council of Normal. As you probably know, during the winter and spring of 2015, our 70 community, over 70 community leaders voluntarily came together to give input on what could be done to better serve the mentally ill and female inmates in our jail and those who are suffering in our community. At that time, as Vice Chair of the County Board, I was asked to chair the Needs Committee to conduct these hearings. We learned from input from leaders in all related health and social service fields in our communities that more was needed to be done. The needs were identified as improved jail facilities, specifically designed for housing of mentally ill, more help for adolescents and youth, unfortunately, of all ages, better collaboration among all social service providers, more practitioners in the field of psychiatry, improved and updated and expanded electronic justice information system, and efforts to eliminate the stigma placed on those suffering from mental illness. What resulted was six committees were formed to write our Mental Health Action Plan. On March 7th, 2016, this council signed on as part of the intergovernmental agreement with the Bloomington City Council and with the county to support these efforts as part of our own efforts to increase the local sales tax. For your information, members who were at that meeting at the time were Members Gaines, Fritson, McBride, Lorenz, McCarthy, and Mayor Kuss. In the last six years, our county administrative staff and Behavioral Health Coordinating Council supervisor, along with myself and other county board members, and in conjunction with members of the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council, have put in hundreds of hours to help make this a county that is providing more additional services in the area of mental health services than most counties in the nation. This could have been done, could not have been done without the one four cent sales tax, annual sales tax dedicated to this project in which you supported. The Behavioral Health Coordinating Council and the county has undertaken the process to build services from scratch, as we had to do. We've been successful with many of the endeavors, and we've taken on many more, over 50 at one time, and some of them have needed funding, which I think we will report to you in a minute. Yet, some of them we've had to stop and take a look at and revise and move on from there. One example of this has been the creating of the triage system that could help our law enforcement systems, hospitals, and crisis response services. This, as we, just as we began this system, of course, then we had the pandemic strike with COVID, and so much of what we were doing there was face-to-face working with people, with people, helping people, and so that kind of helped, at one time, put that on hold. Many startups that you have going on and encounters roadblocks, as we have, this has been one of them that we had for a while, and we'll report to you on that. Just ask RJ Scorrenge about how hard it is to get something going from scratch, as he's done with Rivian. I like to think we're doing something with our mental health improvement system efforts as parallel to what Rivian done. Just as Rivian has been trying to get production off the ground, their efforts have been hampered somewhat by a low supply chain, marketing problems, and of course, the latest war, the Russian war. But with patience and understanding and support, I think both Rivian and our triage system will sustain. Before I turn this over, Ms. Taylor, I'd like to make just a couple other observations. The idea that this Mental Health Action Plan was for the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council to give guidance for additional services to complement and improve what we provide for mental health treatments and services for the citizens of our, of our community. Complement, provide additional services other than what we have been providing for our community. Yes, just like a lot of county government, our county government does take on a conservative approach. We try to provide the impetus and foundation for grant money that will help all of our providers. We try to be the payers of last resort. We are conservative planners. We try to spend money only where it is needed. There is a reason why some of the funds have balances, as you will see, because it is dedicated for projects. At this time, I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman McIntyre, and thank you, Mayor Kuss, and the membership of the Town Council for having us here tonight. I'm going to very quickly go through about 10 slides to help illustrate what we've been working on through the shared sales tax that was provided by the city and the town, but also to highlight some of those projects. So, as the chairman indicated, the intergovernmental agreement that was signed indicated three areas that would be supported. We have, because the integrated case management system is such a large project, we have divided those funds into four categories. And we have equally identified funds for each of those in the amount of $5,822,565. That is the amount through 2021 that we have received to date. So if you break it down even further, we can show that we have received $23,290,261 in total. We have spent $9,483,048, and we have approximately $13.8 million remaining. So if you look at each of those categories...
Ms. Taylor?
Yes?
Could you go back one slide real quick while we take a look at it?
Sure.
Yeah. I just wanted to soak in those numbers just a little bit?
Sure.
And will we be getting copies of these slides?
I actually have a document for each of the council members.
With this content in it?
Content.
Okay.
And a little bit more.
So, the, the leftmost column is budgeted, or...
The leftmost column would be the total that we've received to date through 2021.
Okay.
And there is an error there on that slide where it says received should be spent.
Ah, okay.
And then the last column would be remaining. Since I've gone back, I'd also like to share that this is 2021 to date. If we're looking at projections for each of these categories, we have debt service. For the next three years, we will be allocating 1.1 million to debt service. For the criminal justice, behavioral health, we will be allocating approximately $400,000 in our fiscal year 2022, $575,000 in '23, and $600,000 in fiscal year '24. For behavioral health services, we have projected approximately $2 million for 2022, $2.4 million for 2023, and $2.2 million for '24. And for the AEGIS project, which has been in the planning stages for several years, we have allocated $475,000 for this fiscal year that we're in for the county, 3.3 million for 2023, and 9.7 million for 2024. And I will speak on that a little further. Okay to move on? So, our first project, and probably the easiest to describe, because it is a big building, is our debt service. So, in 2018, the completion of the Law and Justice Center expansion was complete, and shared sales tax supports this in the tune of 1.1 million per year in debt service. This is about 31% of the total debt service on this building. The next category is our criminal justice services. This helps support the expanded behavioral health pod in the Law and Justice Center. And in order to do that, in order to expand and allocate a pod for behavioral health, we have six staff that are supported by this fund, four are corrections officers and two are counseling staff. And they take care of about 20% to 25% of the residents that are on psychotropic medications. I think there are some additional statistics there that show that we had 817 psychiatric patients receiving medications through the detention facility, 1,288 saw a counselor in the, in the jail in 2021, and 375 were elevated to a psychiatric or psychologist, a psych provider. 20 of those were found unfit to stand trial or not guilty by reason of insanity. And so, to address the bio-psychosocial needs of these residents in our care, there is the need for additional staff. We have found that that has increased the response time for some of our most needy individuals that are in our care, and it also has resulted in a 22% reduction in our staff injuries in relationship to those situations that they might find themselves. There's additional programming that the corrections staff has told me that they are excited to get underway as soon as we get out of this arena. I'm not even going to mention its name. I hope it's behind us. The next category is our behavioral health services. This is the one that gets the most attention. This is the, the category that is related to our Behavioral Health Coordinating Council that Mr. McCarthy sits on for the Town Council, and we're happy to have him as part of that group. The Behavioral Health Coordinating Council and the staff that are supported by the Behavioral Health Services also are responsible for our annual Behavioral Health Forum, which is free to the community. This is the staff that also presents our Trauma Informed Community Initiative. They are the group that helps to coordinate the work for the Mental Health Action Plan and help to coordinate all the work groups that come up with those recommendations. And so, I wanted to highlight three of the programs that were recommended through our Mental Health Action Plan. And so, the first would be the Bridge Academy. This is an effort through the Regional Office of Education. They will be assisting students that cannot, due to risk of hospitalization or a return from hospitalization, cannot participate in school in a traditional sense. And so, the Regional Office of Education has identified that they believe there are about 44 students in McLean County that could be served by the Bridge Academy, and funds are supported in part by our shared sales tax and then through the Behavioral Health Services category. The next program I'd like to identify is our Fuse Program. So, the Fuse Program works with our homeless clientele in our community, and they currently have 10 homeless that are now housed and receiving services. This has resulted in, the Fuse Program has resulted in total contacts across all systems. And when I say all systems, I mean the emergency rooms, our homeless shelters, as well as our jails. The system contacts are almost five times higher on average before Fuse involvement than they are after Fuse involvement. And so, if we look at our return on investment for this program, which has four staff, figures that I have found in the community are, that are homeless, have a cost to the community of about $35,000 to $40,000 per person, and we expend about $400,000 a year for this program. So, we are close to breaking even if we consider those figures. The next program that I would like to draw your attention to is our Triage Program, which Chairman McIntyre mentioned. We have 13 staff in the Triage Program that is open seven days a week. It has served 297 individuals in 2021, and already in 2022, we have 131% increase in usage. I would attribute part of that to coming out of the pandemic, but also, we did see an uptick in participation in the community after there was a mention in the press by Chief Bleichner after an incident that occurred on Veterans Parkway. So, I think with additional marketing, with additional attention from our law enforcement, and maybe some partnerships with our, our Mobile Crisis Unit, which are all in the works, we may see additional numbers supporting triage. One of the things that, that sometimes gets confusing for people is that the Behavioral Health Services that we're accounting for here and the programs that I highlighted are separate and in addition to the funds that support mental health through the Health Department. So, frequently, we'll hear of the, the Mental Health Department within the public health arena and how they have 112 grants that they grant out to the community members. That is about 1.4 million that is budgeted through our county budget through the Health Department and is granted out to providers for a variety of services. I do want to mention, before I move on to AEGIS, I'm going to go back just a minute. Our current Mental Health Action Plan will be finalized on Friday, this Friday, at our meeting, and there are 54 recommended goals in that updated 22 plan. 13 of those have a monetary component. And so, when we've projected those needs, we've identified funding for each of those 13 through the shared sales tax, as well as dedicated funds through the county and ARPA funds through the county. So, those categories would include government, justice-involved projects, collaboration and coordination, crisis system, youth, access to medication and medical services, and housing. Those are the identified categories that we will be voting on, on Friday through the We're on direct. There we go. So, our electronic integrated justice system. When we started this project back in 2018, it was of the intent to build a system similar to the one that we currently have. We hired a consultant to come in, who was an expert in the field, because we were a little bit ahead of our times in presenting our justice system in this way, so that everyone from the police officers out in the field, to the attorneys, probation officers, judges, jail staff, were all integrated into the same system, and it reduced duplication and data entry, errors in data entry, but also the workflow of thinking of the justice system really as a system. With many CODs, was very much assisted by this AEGIS, what we call AEGIS. So, we've been working on this update, and it was discovered that this project is going to cost between 30 and 35 million to complete. And so, we knew then that we would have to take a conscientious and deliberate approach to rolling this out. And so, we have looked at this as five components, a case management system, jail management system, records management system, data management system, and then an integration hub that would pull all those systems together and let them talk amongst themselves. And our consultants agree that a best-of-breed approach to hiring a vendor for each of those components is the best way to go. We are voting at the county board meeting in April on the case management system, and we are well on our way into interviews for the records management and jail management system. So, just for your edification as council members, the jail management system and the records management system would be the two systems that would be the most utilized by your law enforcement agencies. And of course, anytime you have a plan, you have to evaluate. And so, we have been working our way around the circle several times with the different priorities that we have using these shared funds. Some of the projects are in the implementation phase, some of them are still in planning phases, but we have worked very hard to use this as our framework and to revise plans as needed as we go along. One such area would be in our crisis system. So, our crisis system touches many of our social service agencies, as well as our triage and Fuse efforts through our BHCC. And we currently are working with Tri-West Consultants. They're an independent evaluator who is going to be working with all of our partners in our crisis system to identify best practices, analyze the service utilization that we have now, to look for opportunities or gaps throughout the crisis system, identify key data points, key performance indicators, and help us reconcile service areas so that that coordination is being used to the best of its abilities. They're also going to assist us to support our 988 planning, which has been a hot topic of late. And that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to field any questions.
Ms. Cummings? No?
I don't, I have necessarily a question. Can you go back to the triage, just the one I was looking at? First of all, while you're doing that, I want to say thank you for providing us with all this information and allowing us the opportunity to see what we've, I guess, invested in, in a sense, you know? And when you look at it, it's, and it's an investment. And so, I, I know you pulled this up, and it just kind of shows the, the different types of referral sources for the triage. If, if I can understand it...
Just from the colors and it's just because of what we can see, and some of it's a little hard. So, most of these are self-referrals that people are... So, basically, what we're, where we're, it's almost showing that there, there is a greater need, and people are aware of, of the need, if it's kind of like the self referral, if you will. Is that resulting in, in any additional? I couldn't, can't really tell from the other, that's why I was, like, my mind, like, if, if people are referring themselves, usually there's a trickle-down, and I can't really tell from the colors what was what. I didn't, I didn't, especially like with the 15%. It could be other, it could be Mobile Crisis, it could be Chestnut, so I want it. Can you kind of share some of those, just because the colors from where I'm sitting kind of blend together?
Yes, so, let me pull out my...
Ms. Cummings, let me, let me start while she's looking.
Okay.
There was a group that went to Chicago, and it was made up of representatives from different organizations, including here and Chestnut and so on, to visit a triage center that was started up there in the city of Chicago, 115th South Roseland. If you're familiar with the area, they took an old police station. And the idea was that when, and this is one thing, we, we're going to, I'm going to get to where you're asking a question here. One thing that, that has happened here with this is the triage was designed to help all of our law enforcement officers and first responders that have someone that they could take there and be examined and identified where they needed to go and leave them, because we have security there, and counselors and people that can help them, and that would help save them on time that they'd have to stay there. So, we went up and we saw that, and we saw, you know, it looked like it was going to be a really a good thing, and we still think it can be. The triage system, though, can fit into the needs of different tiers of levels of needs of people. And what has happened here in just the last couple of months has picked up because now COVID has quieted down a little bit, and we're getting more and more walk-ins. But what our goal is, and I just met with Vanessa Belcher, Granger Belcher, who's our Behavioral Health Coordinating Supervisor, this morning, our goal is to open this up some more, and we, we're talking to our first responders and our chiefs of police and so on, so that they can help bring, it's a place where they can be for, for over 24 hours, be examined, see where they need to go. And instead of tying up time in ER or tying up police officer's time, and, and that was one idea that we're still trying to achieve, we, I've met with our police chiefs, and we're going to continue to work on getting that goal done, as well as some of the other things that can be done. But it can be anything from someone who's experiencing anxiety, you know, and they just need a place to go and sit down and get counseling, to someone who, who is borderline experiencing symptoms of, of types of mental illness, and we can give them direction, get them connected with the right people and so on. And also, our... And also our crisis response team can take, come in and deal with people there too. So there's a lot of things that can be done with triages, but really just getting up and going because a lot of it has to do with face-to-face communication and interaction. And, and that kind of slowed us down when COVID started.
So I've got my bearings now. Uh, at the top there, the 6% in green is law enforcement and then it continues around the circle. So 1% was referred by mobile crisis, 61% self, 7% friend or family, 2% chestnuts, uh, less than 1% from bus ads, uh, on the inside, 3% from bus ads on the back, and so on. And so the other was, uh, identified, I believe, from, uh, participants who did not want to include their referral source or, or from their answers, they could not fit them into another category. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lorenz and then Ms. Smith.
Hello. So on this pie chart, as long as we're here, um, what is the total number that's represented by this pie chart?
I have numbers of, uh, in February, there were 21 visitors and it's increased to 53 in just the last, in March.
Annually, what is it?
For 2021, which is what, uh, this, uh, referral source shows, it was 297 individuals.
About 300, okay. Again, on this, uh, same pie chart, is it of any concern to anyone that PATH is such a small referral source when they are a major, uh, clearinghouse, if you will, of call center for accessing services, um, they are the call center for 211?
Yes, so Vanessa Granger Belcher, when she, um, started with this, one of her goals in the first three months was to reach out to all those providers and service partners to find out, um, what was the reason we weren't getting referrals? Was it, um, lack of knowledge of the services we were providing? Was it that our services weren't effective? Was it that, uh, they couldn't, they didn't know how to refer? And so she is reviewing all of that with not only law enforcement, but with our, um, recovery court, uh, specialists that work with our recovery court, our mobile crisis unit, our local sheriff, and PATH and other services.
So nobody's looked at that for the, up to this point?
I think they have, but I don't think we have a clear answer to why.
Okay. Um, on a different topic, um, could you go back to your earlier slide, I think with the four quadrants? Right. Um, so, so these are the four areas where the, when part of the 1% sales tax is going. I think it's a quarter of it is going.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then in the subsequent slide, you showed kind of how that broke out, dollars and cents. Um, and then you, you later said that, um, about 1.4 million dollars is allocated each year from the McLean County Health Department.
Yes, that's, uh, for 112 grants, yes.
Okay. Is that the total amount that the Health Department, um, has for mental health services?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and those funds are raised through property tax?
Correct.
Okay. So basically our residents are paying for mental health twice through property tax and sales tax, is that correct?
I would say that they're paying for it in two separate areas, yes.
Okay. And do those two groups, um, work together to, uh, leverage their funds and collaborate to leverage those funds so that one plus one equals three? Or do you remain separate and kind of a firewall between what's existing with the Health Department and new activities? Because I think I heard you say something about that, that you're building from scratch and that anything that you're doing with this, with the sales tax dollars is all new. And I'm just wondering why you've, why there is that distinction and if you think that that's been a good practice for the past five years.
The Behavioral Health Coordinating Council is made up, uh, the majority of the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council is made up of service providers, um, so that would include all of our major providers, Chestnut, Center for Youth and Family Solutions, um, CHS, Baby Fold, the hospitals, um, Mark First, uh, I hope I'm not leaving.
Project Oz, yeah.
Project Oz.
We have 21 members.
I, I don't really, I, I probably get to the.
Many of those providers receive funding through the Health Department. And so I would say absolutely there's a collaboration and coordination because those that sit on the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council receive funding from the Health Department and are aware of how that funding is used. And so I would say that there's a great collaboration and coordination with that effort when they're identifying their new recommendations, yes.
So can you give me an example in any one of the four areas where there's been a collaborative effort? Where you have utilized both sales tax figures and property tax, uh, revenue streams to coordinate?
There shouldn't be.
Really?
The, the, well, there doesn't have to be because the Health Department already has the 112 funds. Those are dedicated for property tax. All of our social service providers apply for grants through them. What, as I said when we opened, when we first, when I first started, that what we're doing with this money is in addition, in addition to that, to help support and develop other programs and help develop, have money upfront, money for grants. Is that not, it, it's like talking about athletics and talking about baseball and football. They're different things. We're supporting different things there. Why would we, why would we want to coordinate and collaborate the money? Why? You know, no, you're, you're asking me why, you tell me why. Why would we want to? The Health Department has that money and that money is dedicated and the social service providers apply for grants. Now, should we just give them more money for grants? No, this is to, to go off and do other things in a different direction that will help enhance things that were identified in the Mental Health Action Plan as needs.
Respectfully, my answer to that rhetorical question would be synergy.
What?
Would be synergy. One plus one can equal three when you leverage efforts together.
Well, I have two examples of that synergy. So the Regional Office of Education has the Bridge Academy that's funded through this and they also have embedded schools projects that are funded through the Health Department. We have a crisis system that is supported through funding through the Health Department and then also through your shared sales tax.
Well, my last point will be, um, because I do want to yield, um, is about the Bridge Academy. And the Bridge Academy is really something, as I understand it, that has, has its genesis out of the Regional Office of Education. And that, um, it came about because of the fact that the adolescent outpatient center was not getting off the ground. And that was supposed to be a project funded directly by our sales tax. And it didn't. And there was public dollars allocated for it and there was even private dollars allocated for it from the community. And it did not happen. And so as a result, it appears that the Regional Office of Education has decided to take the lead. And I'm kind of curious how the money from our sales tax will flow from you or from, from, from our taxpayers to a check that will get cut to the county as part of this agreement and then flow to the Regional Office of Education. I wonder if a more direct route would be for us to work directly with the Regional Office of Education. I'll just leave that out there and yield my time. Thanks.
Ms. Smith.
There, there's the green line, okay. Um, so, as I understand it, part of what this effort was seeking to do was to provide support to primarily the county jail that was becoming a mental health treatment center of last resort, um, as, as has happened in many communities because over the course of time, when there was every good intention by de-institutionalizing individuals, um, through common facilities back in the seventies and eighties, the, the follow-up step of providing funding in the community fell through the cracks. And, and so there's been any number of documentaries presented that show that there are a number of people who are incarcerated whose primary, whose primary offense is mental illness. And, and so when you're saying that you want to be the service of last resort, um, there are other providers in the community that serve behavioral health issues, but has there been any real concerted effort to deliver those services to those who are incarcerated and have crossed paths with the criminal justice system before this effort was undertaken?
Yeah, I think we're getting confused on a couple of issues here. One is, yes, there are services provided for those inmates in the jail, up to 34 to 40% that have suffered from mental illness. Our national, we had a national institution of correction, a study team came in and evaluated that and that, and that's something we found was unique nationally with that problem. When referring to payer of last resort, we're talking about a stream of services that are provided for our mental health part of this, which is different on what we were talking about earlier with the jail, the jail services.
So how would you describe the typical individual receiving services through this funding? Is, um, do you have a profile of, of who connects with, with the county to get behavioral health services that's supported by this funding?
So I think we'd have to look at our sequential intercept model for that and that would, um, identify all of the different intercept points where you can come into contact, um, with behavioral health services in the community, but then also that, um, corresponds to a sequential intercept for how you can become involved with the criminal justice system. And so I think at every point, uh, there are opportunities to divert people from the jail and it, back into the community for those behavioral health services, um, as well as offer services if they are those that have to remain in jail.
And I'm not clear on whether triage is, is a referral line or if, if it's an actual physical location where people are showing up. Can you please describe a little clearer what, what you're meaning by triage services?
Yes, so triage, uh, is the name of the location that is in the first floor of 200 West Front Street, um, in the, what some people refer to as the Public Health Building. Uh, it is right there on the downtown Law and Justice Center campus, uh, very close to, uh, the jail. And it is a center that is open 20 hours a day, seven days a week. And it is a living room model where you can stop in, uh, for, um, a brief moment to talk to a counselor and you can stay up to 23 hours in that facility during that time. Um, it's not an overnight facility, so the cap is 23 hours. Uh, but for anyone who is experiencing, um, a mental health crisis and needs a place to go, we have that available and it is, um, a physical location.
And so you do have, uh, individuals coming there instead of tying up emergency rooms and, and having to, to block for physical ailments when they're recognizing that they're needing mental health intervention instead?
That's correct.
And, um, if you'd go back to the slide just before, thanks. What's 988 planning?
So 988 is the, um, system to, uh, address mental health calls through our 911 system.
Okay.
And our, our local PATH has, um, received the statewide, um, contract to provide those services for the state of Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
Did I misspeak?
Further questions or comments? Mr. Nord?
Thank you. A question about the triage. You said there were 297 people that came through that last year. So divided by 52, that's like six, six points, or that's almost six people a week. I just learned that it was a 24-hour facility, so that kind of helps understand the staffing, but you said there's 13 people that staff that? What do they do when there's only six people that are coming through in a week? Are they all full-time staff?
So some of those staff are security guards and so they maintain their function whether they're, no matter. And then others that are, um, counselors, um, they will be, actually, that's a better question for Vanessa than I. Um, as the county administrator, I'm not over there every day. But I do know that they have made connections with, um, doing trainings, um, keeping up on their own education to keep, to keep, uh, sharp with their skills during COVID. Uh, we did have them assisting in other areas for, um, uh, drop-off centers for our, um, buildings that were closed. But I, I can't tell you on a day-to-day basis how they fill up all their time.
Sure. And I don't know what the recommended or the standard, like, oh, employee versus to, to patient ratio should be. But when there's six people a week and they can only be there a day, 13 staff, that, that's just a question that I have and I have no idea if that's good or bad. It's just, it seems like a question to be asked. Then another question is, um, you were talking about there's some debt service and you also have got like 13.8 million dollars that you've collected that's not spent yet. Is there a reason that you're not paying the debt down so that way you can save taxpayers' interest or at least put interest back into your pockets to, you know, help speed up some of the other project funding?
Well, we tried to pay it down a little bit with some of the county money as well, but the, the reason is the intergovernmental agreement is divided into sections and such. When she presented the fourth and the fourth and the fourth type of section, the one-fourth is dedicated funds for the interest on the bonds for the jail.
Oh, so then you can't pay those early?
Well, if we, if we did, we'd be taking money away from one of some of our other projects, that's the problem.
Right. The other thing is I don't know, Mr. Nord, we've covered, um, this a couple of times. It, you can only pay bonds when they're callable. So it would have to, we'd have to know if they were.
Thank you.
Callable and my guess is they're pretty current bonds in terms of, within the last few years, so my guess is they haven't reached a callable, uh, date line, yes.
That's correct.
20-year bonds, uh, when we started the project for the jail addition.
The other issue is that, uh, we are anticipating the cost of Aegis and, uh, would like to have funds available for that. We've allocated our ARPA dollars through the county for the Aegis project as well as, uh, we'll be using some of the reserves that we have, um, not allocated thus far to that project. And so we will be spending quite a bit on Aegis in the next two to three years.
Okay. And then if there's a product or a program that transfers over to like a school district or some other taxing body and they're going to seek funds to run it at some point in the future, like the school one that, uh, Ms. Ms. Lorenz spoke about, would you let us know? Because in my mind, that means that frees up money so then you can put it to another program to make that happen quicker or we can reduce the taxes that we're taking from our citizens because another taxing body is going to be taxing them for that anyway, if that makes sense.
The only thing I was, um, oops, sorry, turned my mic off. I'm sorry, I'm, Mr. Nord, I did want to jump in. Rather than leave that out there, I asked Ms. Taylor to, um, respond to that question or statement. Um, I guess I would defer to Councilmember McCarthy who serves on the, the coordinating council. So he would be the representative who would know if other, um, programs are going to be funded with other sources.
Okay. I would still ask that you let the rest of the council know so that way we don't have to rely on each other to communicate and we know that.
There's also, um, information posted on your website in terms of the meeting minutes and agendas, I believe, for the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council. So I don't want Ms. Taylor to feel like it's her obligation to make sure every action item is shared directly with council, but I will make sure to try to send links to council so you can review minutes and, and agenda items.
Okay. Respectfully, I'd still have it out there. I impose taxes on citizens and part of it is for all these services. If one of them is going to be funded through another taxing source, let us know so we know that these other folks are going to be taxing and we can adjust or not do anything. Um, then the last question that I have, um, is there an ask that's coming before the council here soon from, from McLean County?
No.
Okay. Is, has, has there been any discussion to, like, not? Has there been any discussion to, like, not give this funding anymore?
Not with me directly, no.
When you say not directly, is like indirectly, have there been?
I'm not sure. I have not been asked to not fund this program.
Okay, because in my short term on council, this is the first time I think that we've talked about this. I know Mr. McIntyre was in here before, speaking fairly recently, but.
So the intergovernmental agreement indicates that a report should be given to the city and the town. Typically, we give that in a written form, but it was the request that we come speak tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Nord. I just want to remind council, we did have former McLean County Administrator Ms. Rodriguez and Chairman McIntyre on a Zoom call about a little over a year ago for an update. So it has, we've tried to do it annually the last few years.
We, I'd like to address, a question was asked by Ms. Lorenz, Ms. Lorenz, if you have permission. There can be any organization that could come to Behavioral Health Coordinating Council and combine efforts and try to have money that has to do. If it's definitely dedicated for mental health purposes. I mean, one idea is, there's a possibility there's some non-for-profits that do a great job with volunteer health that could use the funding. Wouldn't be any different than where the Regional Office of Education came. The thing about the Regional Office of Education plan is that that is, there is a grant that goes with this. And this is where we're trying to help with putting up money and support for grants. And eventually, within three years, that should be self-sustaining. And that's kind of the idea. It's additional types of services we can provide for the county other than what the usual dedicated property tax through our health department is. And that's what we're trying to get accomplished.
Mr. Preston and Mr. McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. And my apologies, if you cannot hear me, let me know. I know this mic's been having a little bit of issue lately. Can you go back to the slide that breaks down the four quadrants that you guys are targeting with the resources allocated to it? Yep, so, one, as a reminder, does the IGA, when this was initially passed, mandate that it has to be a 25% breakdown in each of those four? Or just that within any division, those four need to be addressed by these dollars?
It just indicates that we have to address those four categories, but there is, there was not a breakdown of how much to allocate to each of those categories.
I had a second question, but it isn't really as pertinent. Since you have the flexibility, based on your answer there, since you have flexibility, should there be additional need in one as time goes on and less of a need in?
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Chairman McIntyre and Administrator Taylor for your presentation tonight. Very complicated issue. Try to be presented in 15 minutes is no easy challenge. A couple of things. One, I just want to clarify. A comment that was made about overlapping taxable funding sources. The Bridge Academy is not being funded on an ongoing basis by the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council. The funds are startup funds that are not otherwise available from any other taxing agency or body. They are set to try to get grant dollars to make that project viable and sustainable. So there's no overlapping taxing funds being used for the Bridge Academy, just to be clear. That's not really how that's working. Also, on the youth project, if you guys could refresh my memory. So if I remember correctly, a number of providers were brought together to try, come up with a plan to create an RFP, to create some youth services in the community. And then once all of those providers were done creating the RFP, the RFP was put up. But I remember that nobody responded to put in a bid for that RFP to provide those youth services. Do I remember that correctly?
Yes, it was actually presented twice, and twice we had no responses.
So that's why that project didn't get off the ground? Is we didn't have any providers that were willing to step up to do it?
Correct.
Okay, and then that morphed eventually into the Bridge Academy? Do I understand that correctly?
Well.
Or a version of that?
We had a proposal from ROE that fits some of the criteria that had previously been identified in the intensive adolescent outpatient program.
Gotcha.
RFP.
Gotcha. So like any other agency, the ROE came to the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council with a proposal for youth services. And like any other agency, were put under consideration for funding, funder of last resort, but not as a long-term, ongoing funding source?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I was, all that was clarified and that I was actually remembering accurately. Triage. Great to hear the strong increase in numbers already in March. Any insight other than Chief Bleisner's comments in the media? Or we know Chief is an influential individual.
I think part of the increase in numbers is that people are getting out. We started the program in April of 2020.
Yeah.
And so it was a hidden secret for a while. Then people were not getting out and moving around. And so I feel like there's a combination of influences, I think, that could show an increase, but I think that's one of them.
Gotcha, gotcha, that's helpful. I know that's, after listening to our new Behavioral Health Coordinating Council supervisor, I know she's got strong ideas about how to bring that about further. But it's great to see already that we're seeing some increase in those numbers. And also, I want to nuance that a little bit, that the triage center is not for the most critical that would get taken off, that it's a level criticality down because of the nature of those services. So the most urgent that would still get taken off to perhaps the hospital or an emergency department are not what the triage center does, to be clear in our community. It's so that the largest pie wedge, the gold pie wedge of self-reports helps us to give insight of why those aren't necessarily coming from the most critical referral sources. Some of those may be being addressed by a mobile crisis team or being taken off to an ED department. Is that a fair statement?
It is.
Okay, great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Ms. Lorenz?
I want to go back to the 988 question. My understanding that's a grant that has been awarded for PATH to administer, and it's for national suicide prevention.
That's correct.
So they will be the call center for that, as well as the regular 211 social service hotline. So is some of the sales tax dollars helping with the 988 planning?
No, there's no monetary component with that. But when we look at our crisis system and mobile crisis, the triage center, our CRU through Chestnut, and any other providers that would be on that crisis continuum, we want to look at how that might impact those crisis services.
Okay, so then just the last point that I'll make, and I'm speaking for my second and final time, is that, you know, we can get really down into the weeds. And it is a very complicated topic with lots of moving parts. And I think we've all kind of picked at certain parts of them tonight. But kind of the bottom line, literally and figuratively, is that you have received $23 million to date, but you have spent only $9.4 million, and you're sitting on $13 million. And we have, as a body here, at times, taken issue with an entity that had excess reserves. Case in point, I don't think it's any secret that we dialed back some of our contributions to the Convention Visitor Bureau. They had some very robust reserve funds for reasons that I won't get into, but we recognize that. And we were being judicial and prudent, as this body actually is. And chose to dial that back for a period of time and work that out with the director. And, you know, that's the way it is. In another example, this group has also demonstrated over the six or seven years that I've been on here that when we don't see measurable results, we get concerned. And that has, we have taken action in those situations as well, when we have been contributing significant dollars to another entity through an intergovernmental agreement. And I see some similarities here with this tonight. And that concerns me. And it concerns me that it gets pretty murky pretty quickly, that in five or six years, we don't even have an adolescent outpatient center. And we can say, oh, you know, that nobody responded to the RFP, but did anybody look at the RFP? Was there something unanswerable about it? We've got a lot of great, great services in this community. And I find it hard to believe that nobody responded because they're all very, very talented. So I would have to question, how realistic was the RFP? And so we've spun our wheels in that area of adolescent outpatient for five years and have nothing to show for it, until finally now the ROE steps in and makes a recommendation, and hopefully now we're getting going. So the future maybe looks brighter, but the track record doesn't look so good, in my opinion. And that, to me, and bottom line, kind of dollars and cents, is the $13 million that you're sitting on. And that really concerns me.
Mr. McCarthy?
I guess in, more to respond in a minute, but also add a little bit of depth to this conversation that I think we haven't yet touched on. And although we use terms like.
Mr. McCarthy, your microphone's not working real well. There we go, thank you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Thank you. Because I can't hear it. We use words like coordination and collaboration in this arena. And those are easy words that roll off our tongues in meetings. In the terms of service provision in our community, those are much harder terms to actualize and execute on. And from talking to some of the providers that sit on the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council that were in the rooms to help create the RFPs, remember, this was provider-driven. The RFP was created. That then they don't just choose to bid speaks to some reticence in our community of partners to work together, service providers to work together, when they either in-house can't address the need solely to meet the RFP within one shop, are reticent to coordinate with other shops. There's a whole conversation we could have about all of that. But that's a piece of this conversation that we aren't really addressing here is the challenges of getting that to work in our community. And the county, for better or worse, for spearheading this, is the one who tries to help, has to try to make that a reality. But I think fortunately, I think that the ROE is stepping up to do that and helped to solve that problem. And the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council is funding it, which is what the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council was set up to do. And so rather than an oppositional situation, I think we have a win. I think we all want the money that flows into this particular bucket to see services get started and initiated. I think we all do. Certainly, you know, I've had frustrations over the time of that happening. Some of that is, I think, clarity of purpose. Some of that is people just not stepping up to give us proposals that can get funded. Again, like the entirety of the conversation, that this area is complicated. We're not going to solve it with a great proposed spending plan that you have for the next year and how you're throwing money at each one of these areas for mental health service provisions. But it's going to take some hard work among our community members to be willing to step up and collaborate. And that hasn't been the environment here in McLean County. There's certainly examples of that all over the community of partners working together. But on a whole scale that we're trying to address writ large, mental health, big, we haven't had this. So this is new efforts, new work, and new money. And so I don't think it's fair to lay all that responsibility on you guys. Certainly, you have some. But certainly, there's the community. I just want to remind everybody that the Behavioral Health Coordinating Council that's responsible for at least this bucket is all providers. And so the plans, the ideas, are all coming from the providers, or ideally supposed to be. Right? And so you guys, as far as I know, aren't generating the program-level projects that the ideas of any of the programs have been come from a combination of county staff and professional services providers. And so, having said that, there's this interesting dynamic of how do we make that all work? We've got a pot of money, and we want services to start. The last thing I just want to say is, I was concerned seeing a large fund balance as well. I shared that concern with my colleague. And then I was enlightened with the bill that we have coming due for this AEGIS system. And then it became clear why you guys are holding on to funds and why there's big balances that over the next two years are projected to spend over $12 million, most of that $13, on updates and the eventuality of the overhaul of this AEGIS system. And so that helped me to understand why there's these big buckets of money, or a big bucket of money, sitting there. So thanks very much for that clarity.
Ms. Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. I will follow up with just my comments as well. And I do thank Chairman McIntyre and Ms. Taylor for coming in this evening. I appreciate council's comments and your questions. Those are similar questions that I've posed to Ms. Taylor in recent months when we've been talking about preparing for this update. And like you mentioned, Mr. McCarthy, there are some very large expenses on the horizon, of which our law enforcement teams will be taking advantage of that. I believe the overall cost to replace the entire AEGIS system is 30 to 35 million. And so there is a plan, of which I wasn't aware until we started having these conversations in terms of their overall budget. So I do certainly appreciate the concern about the fund balance and making sure we have these continued conversations about what's on, what are the plans and what's on the horizon? And so we can move forward in confidence. So again, just thank you for your presentation this evening. I do have materials that you handed to me right before the meeting that I'll pass out to council, and thank you, Mayor.
And, Mr. Nord?
Just since this is, I guess, the time to say this. For the next presentation, and Ms. Reese, anybody else that presents before us, if they give us paperwork, or could we ask people if they're going to present something, print it off so we can have it to write notes on the slides? Because that would make it so much easier to follow along. Thank you.
I think we learned a lot here tonight, so thank you for the update. Again, I'm feeling more comfortable about where we're going once I had an opportunity to dig into it a little bit and see what the long-term plan is. I was skeptical a month ago as well, but once I better understood what's trying to be done here, especially with the AEGIS system, it made sense to me. So thank you for a very, very informative and discussion on a very complicated issue. So Chairman McIntyre, Ms. Taylor, thank you.
Thank you.
Before taking a motion to adjourn. Before taking a motion to adjourn to executive session, we do have one public commenter, and that is Jimmy Holmes, who's going to speak, and we'll let Chairman McIntyre step aside, and you can have his seat. Just a few house rules for you, Mr. Holmes, that please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Holmes, I'm a freshman political science major at ISU. I live in Hewitt this year, and I'm planning to live there next year as well. The infrastructure surrounding the Hewitt-Manchester complex is flawed, in my opinion, but it is flawed. Hewitt-Manchester houses about 1,600 students, and those students come and go every day, but the way the roads are currently designed, everyone must cross a major road to get to campus. I believe that this is already a flaw, but it gets worse, because the intersection of College Avenue and School Street specifically is very dangerous. Obviously, College Avenue diverges around Hewitt-Manchester to become two separate one-way streets, but the biggest problem is that, or, but the biggest problem is that College Avenue and School Street, when someone crosses from campus to Hewitt-Manchester, pedestrians cannot see the cars coming, and these cars are going very fast. And because college students have busy lives, people are going to jaywalk, it is inevitable. This leads to really dangerous situations daily. I personally see people almost get hit there constantly, like almost every light cycle, almost, it's very close to that. In a perfect world, there would either be a bridge or a tunnel to connect the Hewitt-Manchester complex to campus, but obviously, that's very expensive, and enforcing jaywalking laws will only cause more problems, because most students can't afford to pay a ticket. And so I would like to see something be done about this intersection to make it more pedestrian-friendly without punishing the pedestrians. Yeah, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, and I would point out that Mr. Holmes brought 15 or 20 of his friends from Illinois State University here tonight, so thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. Before taking a motion to adjourn to executive session for, to discuss matters of personnel, are there comments or concerns from council members? A motion to adjourn to executive session and discuss matters of personnel.
Wait, did we say the number? Oh, you said for personnel. It was moved in second.
Did we have a move in a second?
Yep, we did.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session.